All right, well, we are at seven o'clock and it appears that all the board members are present. So I think we can probably call the meeting to order.
Noted.
Thank you, Debbie. Welcome, everybody. First up on our agenda is the agenda review. So without further ado, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as published. By the way, we did make a slight tweak to the order at the request of the administration so that we could look at the the discussion items for the policy updates first in case some of the policy work group folks were that that might be present would be here to answer questions early.
I move to accept the agenda as published.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? No? Okay, Debbie, please.
I guess Jennifer.
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Earth?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Janet?
Yeah.
And Jonathan?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor.
Appreciate it, everybody. Okay, well, let's get right into it. Scott is up first with a superintendent update, so we can jump right in.
Well, thank you, Jonathan. I've tried to learn how to hold my iPad and talk at the same time, so I'm not looking down. So bear with me, everyone. So I just, I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes during my time tonight just to talk about how much efforts we're putting into and that we will be putting into getting everyone back to school five days per week in a full predictable schedule for kids in K-12. Starting for next year, it's so critical. And I just don't think that that bringing anything up in my announcements that I couldn't already cover in my weekly updates for you is even worthy at this time. I want our public to know. I want our board to know. I want all of our staff to know how important this is to me and the teammates I I work with every day that we will be doing whatever it takes on our end to control what's within our control to make sure that we open in a regular five-day-a-week predictable format. And so I just wanted to start off with that. Right now, what are we doing to make sure that our kids are squared away for next year? Well, we're already starting planning for summer school. We've received hundreds of thousands of dollars from state and federal funding to be able to service as many kids as we can. Surprisingly, we do have a large number of teachers at this point. I don't know the exact. I don't want to freestyle with that number, but we have found a lot of interest in our teachers to teach during the summer. The focus for our kids will be on enrichment activities. So teachers can really build that human connection back with kids to start to start that that homeschool connection that kids have been missing over the past year. And then in high school, of course, we'll be laser focused on credit recovery as well as a couple of other things. So we are starting now. We will be identifying teacher leaders that will be helping us coordinate these programs. Certainly an excellent opportunity for them. We will be going over with the board. This is budget season. Steve Nielsen and I are working closely on on the budget right now. And and I think you'll see that this year, which is different than any of the years past, we have many, many different funding streams that are coming as a result of the American Recovery Act and and additional states funding, not the least of which also is SIA funding. This week on Monday, Sequoia Falls opened up in their in their permanent facility. As I was driving by the old church this morning, they were already loading up cars and and transferring their their stuff over there. So that's really exciting as well. Because that is our strategy to make sure that we're catching those kids who are falling through the cracks, who have not responded to traditional educational strategies in their school careers with us. So all this to say that this is obviously the number one priority for us is to get our our kids back to school. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, yes, we know the cases are rising. We do know that. I, last time I checked the data on the WESD website, it hadn't been updated yet, but it should be anytime this evening if it hasn't already. We know the cases are on the rise, but I also want the community to know that we fully intend to remain in the format that we're in with the in-person instruction we do have. And we're not even close to hitting the upper end of the range that where we would even need to start seriously considering moving to CDL or distance learning. We fully intend to remain in hybrid learning. And so I just want to make sure that that I'm clear with our with our patrons, our community members, and with all of you. And having said that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, just wanted to make those two points really clear.
Any questions for Scott? Yeah, Sheldon.
I just wanted to say thank you for giving us that clear information. I think it's important at this point knowing that we have seen some of the numbers rise for COVID in our area and our state in conjunction with, you know, an agenda item that we're going to be talking about again, the resolution and whatever that's going to mean at this point, revisiting that. And the idea that it would have been a possibility to go back four days a week, but it looks like we're going to have to put that on hold. So I just want to thank you for, you know, giving us the most up-to-date information because I know that it's changing every day. And it has been for the several for several months over the even the past year. And that's, you know, I want to make it very clear to the public as well that that is what we're dealing with on a daily basis. You get information that's changing all the time and and it's hard to make concrete decisions. You know, not only right now, I mean, but let alone four or five months from now. I mean, we can't even make decisions for the end of the week, for Christ's sake. So it's, you know, this is a heavy topic. It's all on our minds right now. I would love to be back five days a week, starting next week. But it the the moving targets are just unbelievable. And so I just want to thank you for continuing to keep us updated with, well, the most current numbers for today. And they'll change tomorrow and the next day and the next day. So thanks again for for doing that and being very clear about it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Shelley. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Did you want to speak at all about the really cool work that happened at the Mark Twain area recently?
I'd be happy to.
Really exciting, yeah.
Well, that was exciting. And you know, we've a lot's happened since our last work session and since the last time I presented on this topic. We'll just start out with with the cleanup. The the Grove has been completely cleaned up. The ground has been carefully leveled out and then overseeded, although there's still a little bit of work to do there. And we met with the city manager and city planner. And they came over with an idea. They had found an allotment of white oaks. And before they could even finish their sentence, I said, we'll take them off. So we have 300. We planted 100 of them in that Mark Twain Oak Grove. We will do another 100 in the fall. And then we will do the remaining 100 on a piece of public land with the city. We're going to do an oak grove there next to Robert Frost. And then we will use the remainder to plant at Scott's Mills Grove there and then at the high school as well. And some other news, we've we've had all the wood returned to the Grove, or at least the vast majority of it. And we will, we've made contact. Derek McElfresh is working with the CTE program at the high school. As you know, the facilities in the in the class are just incredible. We have some really, really nice old growth wood to work with, and we want to incorporate their work with using some of that wood in. And all of the wood will be incorporated into the area in terms of natural landscape, possible outdoor furniture, picnic benches, things like that. But before we do any of that with the planning, we will be holding a listening session for the community. One possibly to this summer, because we want to know what the community would like to see in that area as well. We'd like to, we'd like to get their thoughts and 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 we'd like to make that area an area that 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 they would be comfortable with and that they would be proud of.
That's awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that update. That's nice to know.
And thank you for everyone that 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 turned out is.
All right, any any other questions for Scott? Okay. I've been having some bandwidth issues, so just holler if I'm not coming through clearly, please. Right, well, that's going to move us then into our first discussion items, which are the policy updates, and they are all on the board book. The first one, I think there's five, is GBEB communicable diseases. Any any comments, questions, or discussion that anybody would like to have on that one?
Just a quick question. So I'm what I'm assuming, if I'm understanding correctly, is that the GBEB is replacing GBEB GHCC? I think it was, is it the GH, excuse me, JHCC that's being deleted? Because it's being replaced. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's right. Let me double check that.
Clicking on here and.
Yes, that is correct. Yes. Yep. And you're, I think you're going to see, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott and Dan. But as we go through these policies, you're going to see some that come up that are going to be doing that. They're going to be, there's going to be some policies that are going to be replaced and incorporated in other policies. So don't be afraid to ask that question if it comes up. Because they're kind of incorporating some other ones, and they don't need to be standalone. Some don't need to be standalone anymore. So, yeah. But if you ever have a question about that.
Well, and it does seem like there have been several policies that just because of COVID have become less relevant, and they've been replaced with more up-to-date policies because of what we're dealing with now. So that that's good to know. Thank you, Shelley.
Right, yeah. Thanks. Thanks, Scott, too.
Okay. So any questions on any of, I'll just say, any of the communicable disease items? The first three, I believe, are all interrelated there. Okay. Let's move on to 4D. Hazing harassment intimidation bullying menacing and cyberbullying. Can you guys hear me? I apologize. My screen's freezing.
I'm struggling. I've been working on a different computer and I'm struggling to do read and some of the, I would ask, it might be helpful to have a little bit of a key to explain what some of the highlights in different colors mean, just in general with these policies. Some of them have a lot. You know, obviously, the strikeouts are easy to interpret, but some of the others, I'm not sure if it's old language, adjusted language, maybe language.
Yes.
So that's just the only.
That's really good feedback for us, Janet. You're correct on that. We can definitely do that for the second reading. We could just make that standard on our board updates at the bottom. We'll have the legend.
That'd be great. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion on either of these two? There's really two that are interrelated there as well.
Before we move on, Jonathan, I did want to ask a question at the end, like when we're wrapping that up this up real quick.
I had a quick question about the highlighted areas. Some of them are are highlights of black font. And then then at the bottom, there's highlight of a bluish green font. Are those different types of additions? Should I be interpreting those those two font colors differently or? But yeah, I guess it's somewhere it's it's black font highlighted and somewhere it's green font highlighted.
If I get that in, I think that when OSBA sends them over, they don't translate. And then they go to the Google form and then they go to a PDF. And I'm trying to catch up with all the different colors, how they they're interpreted differently throughout every every time I re-resave them. So I
Oh, wow.
It shouldn't be this different. I'll start cleaning up.
Shannon, are you referring to GBNA, the policy? Okay.
I'm in the AR right now.
Oh, you're in AR?
Yeah. And if there's no overarching rule, that's fine. I I didn't have any issues that I needed to, you know, that I wanted to bring. I just thought I thought I'd ask whether there was something substantively different between those two different highlighted sections, you know, that maybe some of them were our changes and some of them were OSBA changes. Or, you know.
Yeah, I think more of a reason, Janet, why we'll have a legend at the end. Yeah, good feedback for us.
But I totally get, I mean, there's just a lot of different stuff going on here for you guys in terms of being able to track all of the nuances and all of the different, you know, the language changes and where they're coming from. And so I totally get that it's a.
If I had to spec, if I had to speculate, I would say that the highlighted portions are things that were either new language coming in from the policy. And then the other colored fonts, we have a lot of authors or co-conspirators. That's probably not the right word, but a few different people.
Collaborators.
Other collaborators there. That's.
Not in the bad sense, not in the World War II sense.
So we have a few collaborators, and I think it kind of assigns us the colors when we're in there working on it. So I had to, if I had to guess, that's what I would say it is. And but I do think a legend would be a great addition to our work, which we're starting to hit a rhythm.
It sounds like it.
Yeah, can I can I chime in, Dan? You know, like really quick, you know, we we were, we were what we called, what would Janet look for? We really did. And we changed some of the wording, you know, for example, if you see in there, it's a kind of a bluish aqua color. It was shall and we put will. We had a very lengthy discussion about shall and will. And we looked it up, we Googled it and and, you know, because moving forward, we really want to be able to know, you know, what that interpretation is in a policy and whatever policy and it can be different, right? So we had quite a conversation about shall and will, and we landed on will as a consensus of the whole group. So moving forward, we're, I mean, we got that detailed and that deep into, you know, as a group, you know, understanding that. So when we move forward on other policies, we can see if that fits for current language and grammar, quite honestly. A lot of this is, man, it's 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 old language. And we're really updating not only the updates from OSBA recommendation, but we're also correcting grammar and such. And so it's it's called the what would Janet see? We're working very hard to to pass the Janet threshold.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
We have a great time in there, I think. Yeah, it's it's been good for us. So I don't know. I think anybody else.
Jonathan, since, if it's okay with you, I wanted to have, I think Debbie's able to promote Dawn Dixon couldn't be here tonight. I just wanted to make sure that that I gave Dawn an opportunity to share a little bit about her experience with the work group if I could. And just to thank Dawn publicly and Dixon and the other work group members.
And she can probably answer for sure on the colors on that.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Hello, people.
Hi, Dawn.
How are you? All right, I've been listening in. Sorry, we didn't have access for me to speak, so thank you, IT, for fixing that.
We had a, we had a question about the color coding.
Yes, I've I've been listening. So let me go through this real quick. In fact, if it's okay, um, let me see. Can I share a screen in this mode? Yes. I'm going to attempt to do that so I can kind of show you guys what I have. Okay. So let me walk you through. This is a good example. Just make sure you see a policy on your screen right now with some comments on the right-hand side, correct? Okay, so here's one that we went through. So what happens? We all work in commenting mode so that we can see every single change. We want to make sure that we're not overriding anything. So you can see, this was one that Dixon and I worked on, and I'm typically the scribe when Dixon and I are working together. So you'll see all of these comments are mine. When it comes to things like the highlighted portions here and the green text, those are from OSBA. So what we receive in an update is an edited policy. And it'll say at the top, model sample policy, like it does up here. And then I just struck that through for the purposes of getting it, you know, finalized for our book. So other places, though, where you might see some pink strike through like here, if I click on that, you can see that this was somebody, I believe this is Peggy from OSBA, correct? Somebody probably knows better than I do.
Yes, she is.
Right, so all of these changes are annotated. Leslie Fisher made a change over here, a very minor one. And then down below, I think you had a question, Janet. All of these that are highlighted are ones that were added. The ones that are blue were just links. They're hyperlinks to the actual statute for reference. So that's pretty much how that all works out. And yeah, anything that was added later, probably, you know, any of the statutes that were added in either are new statutes or, you know, language change. So they wanted to add in the updated statute. Does that make sense? Any other questions I can help with?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Dawn, just wanted to say thank you for all of you and Dixon and the other policy work group members.
It is our pleasure.
A lot to us.
Get through this backlog and you're very welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Shelley, you said you had a question at the end. Is that still the case?
Yeah, I did. Just really quick, you know, we sent the group, um, sent, is it five tonight? One, two, three, four, five? Um, how did that feel? That amount of policies to put forward to you guys to review and be ready to have a first reading? Was it too many? Was it too little? Could you handle more? Do you want less? How are you feeling about that?
It seemed good to me. I saw other thumbs ups. So it sounds like that must be the sweet spot, maybe.
So we'll continue with about five.
I I thought it was perfect. Sometimes it depends on the policy, too, right? I mean, some of them are just really beefy and some of them are deletes and some of them are, well, look, we have no choice. We, this is what we have to do. So maybe that can be part of your consideration, too, is like, is this a heavy lift in terms of what we might anticipate discussing? And so forth. But no, I thought it was great.
Okay, yeah. And I think, yeah, I think the last time we sent out, I think it was more than that. And I think there were two of them that were just straight delete, you know, so that's kind of a nice to say, yep, go ahead and delete that. We're good. And that kind of helps us get going, too. So I just wanted to ask that question since there wasn't an actual delete on this one, like just fast track delete. These were had to be read. So five was good. Okay, thank you for the feedback.
Thanks. Really appreciate it. Okay, well, it seems like we're ready to move along, so I'm going to do that. Next on the agenda, we have 4F, which is to discuss the poss possibility of a board resolution advocating full return to five-day-a-week in-person instruction in the fall. And this is a follow-on to the conversation that sort of started or was supposed to be in February. I think it was pushed to March. We discussed it, suggested we would talk about it at a upcoming work session. And the idea here is really to piggyback on what Scott said at the beginning, which is that, you know, he's planning on moving and planning for full five-day-a-week instruction. And do we, as a board, want to advocate that that actually happened sort of on the district's behalf? Or do we not want to do that? And that's really, there's no action item, but the idea here is to follow up and see if there's interest in pursuing that type of resolution. And if there is, then we could start to work on putting that together. And it would be different from the original one that Tom put forward, because things are different. And now we're really looking to target the fall, I think, not so much, you know, the next six weeks.
Yeah, Jonathan.
I'm just opening up the conversation. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I like, yeah, I would like to do that. I know one of the things I've really seen is that it's 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 easy to shut things down. What's really hard is getting things back going again. And that's what I've been watching our districts, our districts struggle with. I mean, getting school bus drivers has been just, it 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 takes a lot of time and a lot of planning to just get things going again. You know, it's easy to, it's it's easy to hit the the e-brake. But it's really, really hard with all the different moving parts of a school district to get things going. And that's kind of what, that's kind of why I'd like some certainty, you know. It it takes months and months and months of planning to get things going. And that's kind of why I like to encourage encourage a resolution, us to do that. We we know what, you know, vaccines are available. And certainly by by next year, they'll be readily available for anybody who wants them. Another point I was thinking of is that there's, you know, we understand our our schools, our buildings have been modified with better ventilation, student-staff movement, what are the notes that I write down here? You know, another others, other sanitation measures, you know, so we, the entire population kind of knows what this is, and I think we need to learn in some way, regardless of the of the level of the, not not regardless, but but we need, we need to learn to live with this thing and continue to operate our schools, because the kids, the kids' education, I think, is suffering pretty good, quite quite remarkably during this. So, yeah, I'd like to. I said, yeah, that's mine. I'm done. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Jennifer.
So, Tom, would you say that I'm trying to to just kind of summarize what you said. Would you say that maybe an ask would be that, you know, if cases are rising, that other parts of our culture maybe be modified before schools are restricted?
Yes. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Perhaps, you know, right, yes.
I'm sorry, other other parts of. I'm sorry, other, other parts of our culture be modified?
Like restriction, restrictions on restaurants or, you know, places that people gather. Like, so a lot of people have felt that we have done it backwards, that we let, you know, things like, things, I, I don't have examples, but other things be more open and schools be more closed. And that that may have been a mistake. And so I just wondered if that was kind of along Tom's thinking and if, you know, yeah, if, if he wanted to advocate for something, if that would be something that he would advocate for. Because I'm, I'm just trying to get at the purpose of any further board action. Because Scott has made a very clear statement. And so I'm just trying to figure out what it is that people want to see in addition to that, if anything.
Right, right. I guess, you know what I'm saying? Yeah. I mean, I, I agree with Scott. I mean, I see Scott's making plans for next year to be open full five days, but, but if the state said that says otherwise, that's, that doesn't matter what Scott wants or what, you know? So, so our job is, our job is to advocate upward, you know, complaints go upward. So we're, we're Scott's boss. And if we want to back Scott up, we got to kick the complaint upstairs. Or the input, however you'd like to say it, you know, so. Yeah, that's, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, you know? I mean, we got like, and to your point, Shelley, not Shelley, Jennifer, you know, planes are flying full shoulder to shoulder. Airports, you know, all of that stuff. And, and, and they've been that way for all a long time. And those outfits advocated strongly for those positions. And I don't think the education system is advocated for, for kids. We've just kind of gone along and let other places advocate for, for their reopenings. I think we need to say, hey, this is how the businesses and other groups have said, this is how it's affecting my business. And we're not kicking the complaint upstairs, saying this is how it's affecting our kids. And I think we need to do that. You know, because if we don't complain, the, 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 the input will be, well, they must be doing okay. And I, I don't think, I don't think on whole, the kids are. So that's, I think we need to, I think we need to advocate for, for, for kids a bit. And, and like, and like Jennifer said, maybe restrict something if, if, if the state feels that restrictions need to be made and the population, try to restrict other outfits before schools. Thank you.
Jennifer, follow on there?
Yeah, I just would, in my thinking, I just want to pass along a kind of an aha moment that I had as I've been thinking about this. That the governor uses this, I, I, I think, well, I don't know this for sure, but I wonder. There's all these things like, like Tom's talking about flights or, you know, restaurants or schools. And there's a larger umbrella of public health and the spread of COVID-19 that we are, that's, you know, beyond the scope of, of what we do. Yeah. And, and I just want to put, put that out there that, and, and I think that fits with the discussion that Tom's brought up, that, you know, we, we could advocate that, you know, if it, well, there, I see some room there. I see, I, I guess I see room for advocacy there if there's something that we could all agree on. And I'm not saying that my mind is set one way or the other. I'm totally open. I just want to know kind of what people are like, what's the point? What, what is our direction here if we have one?
Thanks, Jennifer. Other board members have thoughts that they want to share on this matter?
I think I, I just have something quick to say. I, I think I'm following on the line of Jennifer is what, at this point, what are we, you know, truly trying to get out of it? I mean, I know you want to open five days a week, right? That's the ultimate goal. I don't know. I, what is, what are, what is the ultimate, what are we trying to get out of it? I mean, it's, it's a public health issue. Most of the places that are open are private corporations and companies.
Okay.
They're not, they're not public, funded, you know, organizations.
Yeah.
I just think, you know, the private corporations, you know, they can create policies. They can, you know, if they have people on it, they can do it. You know, they can implement, you know, you know, a required mask mandate, you know, whatever, but, you know, and how does this affect the teachers and the contracts that we have with them? Do we have to create a lot of MOUs? Do we have to shift all of that? You know, legal? Do we need to make sure that we have legal documents, you know, that say, you know, if, you know, there's a rampant case of, of COVID that goes through and we have children who are sick? I don't know. There's just so much complexity behind it. And I, 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 you know, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I, I think there's, there is a lot to do. I think a lot of districts want to be back five days a week. I, I just, I don't know. I, I'd like to hear from others. I'm not, I just want to hear other ideas.
Well, all I can say is that I'm, I, I was really taken back that the metrics were moving back up again. I, I really thought by now, we would be in school. I mean, when you look at the length of time that we have been in this flux with COVID. And I'm trying to think about what the benefit would be too, as we advocate for the fall. Because I think down deep, we all want to see our kids back in school. I mean, quite frankly, as a teacher, I'd like to be back in school. So I'm struggling to, because there's just other entities above us that, that dictate what can and can't happen in Oregon. So what is it that we really want to advocate for with this potential resolution? Because I believe our superintendent has made it very clear from the beginning, what the hope and intent is.
Thanks, Lori.
Yeah, my, my feelings haven't changed much, I guess, since the last time we, we had this conversation. I was under the understanding that we were going to wait until, you know, June or July to talk again. So that's, that's fine. But really, nothing has changed significantly. We still want those kids back in school, five days a week. That's been our intention from the get-go. I don't think anybody serves as a board member to not have kids in schools or classrooms. And I think I, you know, I'm kind of along the lines with their, with, with Shelley and Lori in the sense of saying, well, what is it that we're asking for? If we're just going to make a statement that say, that says, oh, this is important. And we believe in, in this happening, then that feels largely symbolic to me. And I guess that's not a bad thing. But I, I sort of go, well, what, why is that necessary? And if we're going to be more specific, if we're going to be asking for exemptions or waivers or, well, we don't, we want you to change the metrics or we want you to do something different, then I think we need to know what we're asking for and have a lot more information, a lot more data to be able to put together a, a request that's really solid. So that, I mean, that's where I am again, is also asking, well, what, what, what is the purpose of the resolution? Is it substantive? In which case, we need to be doing our research? Is it symbolic? And, and why do we feel that that's, that that's important? So, yeah, I, I guess I'm sort of at the same place. I'm really concerned about the case, the cases rising. I think it's temporary from what I can understand. But, and it concerns me that we would paint ourselves in some sort of a corner. I think we need as much flexibility as we can, as we can give ourselves in, in this kind of situation. And so, and I think Scott needs as much flexibility as, as he can have to be able to pivot and change on a dime and do what he needs to do. And so taking a sort of a firm stand on anything as a board feels to me like it's unnecessarily restrictive. But I'm certainly open to, to continuing the conversation.
Thanks, Shannon. Yeah, when I, when I think about this, I, you know, I think I, I agree, well, I agree largely with what Tom said. You know, when we start to see trade-offs and we start to see things that are happening out there with, with reopening or partial reopenings, you know, we, we saw schools really not come back in Oregon. They came back in a lot of states. They didn't come back in Oregon. And I think from my perspective, we should be advocating that closing schools be done as an absolute last resort. And I don't, you know, I'm not sure I would agree that it was a last resort. It was, I think Tom said it well, it was easy to shut it down and it's really hard to start it back up. When I look at what's happened in the year since, since things shut down, I think a huge number of children have more or less lost a year of education. And I don't mean that in any way against the teachers. I love our teachers. I know many. I don't mean it against Scott or the administration. I don't mean it against the school board.
Right.
I think it was a symptom of the reaction that was made. And we can all debate whether it was a right or wrong one in hindsight. That's either here nor there. But I think what I'm advocating for, what I would be wanting to do is to say, please, Oregon State Government, whoever's in charge of these decisions, let's make sure that kids aren't being, I'll, I'll use the word sacrificed for, for the sake of other activities or other things, right? I think, I think in the whole rack and stack, they came last. And it's, it's just not my personality to say, let's sacrifice our future for the sake of myself today, right? That's not, I, I'm more of a run out in front of the bus and grab the kid, just get out to get hit by the bus, right? And so as we watch these kids lose that year of education, I'm saying, how can we, and even if it is symbolic, at least I feel like I'm doing something, right? Because as a board member, I mean, a lot of what we do, you know, there's, there's things that are important. You know, we can review policies. We can talk about, you know, a lot of things. But at the end of the day, I don't know that there's anything more important than the education of kids. And I think we have really, really suffered there in the last year. And I, I say that from personal experience and it's, it's really been a, a struggle. And so my, my view is how do we support Scott? If his aim is to get the kids back, how do we support him? Well, one thing we can do is to advocate to try to help make sure that is what happens. And I, you know, whether we advocate or not, if numbers are through the roof and they have reason to keep it shut down in the fall, they're still going to keep it shut down, right? I'm just saying, what can we do that says something? And it's my view, we, we should back him on this. And I, Scott, if you feel like it, you can weigh in and share what your, your thoughts are of whether you'd find value in this or not.
Well, clearly what we know is that to continue on in the current state that we're in with, you know, a myriad of different ways to try to keep kids connected and something that, you know, we weren't at all trained to do. And we've managed to, to, to trudge our way through this past year. Certainly to me is not sustainable if we want to try to avoid affecting an entire generation of children. Having said that, you know, as a public servant and, and as, as a public servant who also happens to be the leader of Silver Falls School District, I focus, where I would like my focus be in the focus of the school district are on exactly the things we can control. And those things that we can control are what are in, you know, our immediate purview. And, and to make sure that we're doing those things, believing that we will open in a five day a week format. And if we don't, it won't be because of something we left undone or did.
Right.
That's the key. But I think our, our teachers, our students, their families have suffered for so long. And, and that it's time for us to get back to some sort of predictable systematic way of addressing getting back to school, getting back to normal. And those are the feelings that I have on the subject. And if anybody out there is, is frustrated, I can tell you as a superintendent and as a parent of two special needs boys who have been out of school and who cannot access remote learning, I feel you. I do feel you.
Thank you, Scott. I really appreciate the input.
Just wait, one more comment. I think from what I understand, I'm not sure that, that any vaccines have been approved for children under 16. I thought I heard something about maybe 12 to 16 for one of them. But my point being that I'm, that what I'm hoping for the fall is that we will have more, some more of that, that research that allows children to, to have access to vaccinations. Because it concerns me too, that, that some students will not be able to go back because they will be, they'll be vulnerable. And, and I'm not suggesting we keep everyone out for that reason. That's, I'm certainly not suggesting that at all. But I think there are, there, you know, there are some concerns moving forward. But I think this is going to roll out in such a way, I'm optimistic that by the fall, we're going to have a lot more tools in our tool belt. And, and I agree, it's just been such a hard year. It's just been, I mean, I'm a senior, you, you guys all have kids. It's just been a really, really difficult year. And we, we can't do it again. I absolutely agree. It's just, it's devastating to think about. So I think that's where all our hearts are for sure.
I was wondering, because I'm, I'm listening to everyone, is there, I think we're all in agreement that we want to see students back in school. But to Janet's point, we don't want to make it so, paint ourselves in a corner and then make it very difficult to somehow step out of that. And I, and I still go back to what all of our teachers and our administrators have done in schools to make it safe right now with the hybrid. I mean, it is immense what they have done. And so a part of me would like to revisit this in June or July possibly, as more information is coming in and we're starting to see things. I hope, I hope, I hope things come down to the point where we feel like we can have some type of normal. And that way, there will be more information to support what is just around the corner in the fall. And then I think that would allow us to have a, probably a stronger directive on what we want to say as a board and for our students. I don't know. I'm just sort of talking from what I'm hearing from others. But that's an idea that I have.
Jonathan?
Yeah, Tom.
Well, so it's like some, some good information. And I've, I've done lots of reading and researching online. And that's, you know, perhaps I've got it wrong. But from what I understand, kids are not susceptible to this virus very much. They catch it, but, but for the most part, there's very rarely is, is, is any, is anybody injured. And most of the, most of the articles and, and the, the scientific research that I've seen is that the schools, areas where the schools are open, don't, the schools being open don't increase the spread in, in the community. The, the, whatever, whatever amount of COVID you'll see in the schools is basically reflects the same as what's already in the background. So if the, the rate of infection in, in a community is irrelevant if the schools are open or they're closed. So there's, there's COVID spread amongst kids if they stay at home or if they go to school, it, it's about the same. So it doesn't matter. Opening schools does not increase the, the spread of COVID. At least that's, that's the research I've, I've done. So I, I, I don't know how we prove that or bring in the definitive research that, that would help us with that. But that's, that's, that's the work I did. Jennifer?
I just want to say that I think in general, the sense that I get is that the powers that be understand that now. I mean, that's why there was a big push to get, I mean, the governor ordered schools to open up at least, you know, I mean, that's why there was a big push to get, I mean, the governor ordered schools to open up at least, you know, for some in-person instruction. And so that is the sense that I get is that the data now has come in and they're saying, well, it's really bad to keep kids out of school. And so, and, and, and you know, it's a balance, right? Like everybody says, we'll listen to the science. Well, yes, we listen to the science and applying it is not an exact science. Applying it to policy is not an exact science, right? But I, that's the sense that I get in general is that, you know, the, the powers that be are, are reading and, and being advised on all of the latest information that's coming in. And that seems to be the trend to me, that they are now prioritizing school attendance. So I just wanted to put that point forward. And I also wanted to put the point forward that, that, you know, Scott has joined with other superintendents in the past year to advocate. And I would assume that if he sees an opportunity for us to join with other school districts and advocate, that that would be something he would bring to us so that we could consider it.
Yeah, Shelley.
I, I was, I was just going to say actually what Jennifer said. I had written some notes down about, you know, I, I, I do know that Scott has been, you know, very active with other superintendents. And if there are, I think it'd be more of an impact if there were other districts who, you know, were on board with this and there was a big push. But I think it's, I really believe it's going in the right direction. And I honestly, I have faith in Scott. Bring, you know, if that does happen, you know, because he's working on it so hard that he would bring that to the board. And I think there, I think, I don't know that we're going to necessarily need a resolution coming from us. I don't think we're in the, I think if it was, I don't know, I've been, I don't have a crystal ball, but I think if it was this fall and there was nothing, you know, I think then I would probably be on board going, let's, and let's do something or let's get some other districts, you know, on board. But I think coming up to this level at this point, when Scott is working with other superintendents and other districts, and other districts have sent in letters like a Swego, multiple other districts, and they were pretty much laughed at. You know, I think we're to a point where it's, we're come, I think we're coming over the hump where they know that kids have to be in and they're going to make it work. I think there's enough voices out there, not just from school boards, but just from families in general. Saying, and, and studies coming out all over the place that we need, the kids need to be back in school and there's no other choice. So make it work. So I, yeah, I'm in, I got to piggyback on what Jennifer said on that for sure. So that, that was my thought process as well.
And I just wanted to add that, Tom, I know what you're talking about because there is more research coming out that way. I, and I totally appreciate that and I have heard that. I'll just say it. But the thing is, once certain things are in place, then you have to start considering all the employees and the teachers. And, you know, and it kind of goes down and it kind of trickles down. And, and, and I think Shelley mentioned, touched on contracts and MOUs. And, and then how does that look when we're back in school? What is that going to take? I mean, think about the money that's involved in creating all these safe spaces for students and teachers and administrators. It, it's a, it's just an insurmountable expectation too. I mean, and, and what schools have had to do. But I, I have heard what Tom has spoken about. It's just that everyone else that's involved in a part of the school district that makes the district work each day has to be considered as well. So anyway, that's it.
Well, yeah, I guess my one thing. I guess, I guess my point is that is, is if we're, if, if we're, if we're all reading these, these scientific studies and we seem to agree with them, let's join and make sure the, the powers that be hear those too. And give us a vote of confidence. My son came home the other day and this is anecdotal evidence. But for forecasting next year, the teacher said that they probably, a lot of the students, or half the students are probably need to retake that class because they only got through about half of the material this year and they're not ready to advance to the next level. Now, my son is going a, a technical route and this is, this is not, not saying this to throw this teacher under the bus for the high school. They're working their tail off. So trust me, that's not what that statement was about. But and, and honestly, I, if, if the report that my son gave me was true, I, I admire, I'm glad that, that that teacher was honest. But my son's going to be fine because he's going to technical, technical school route. He does, he's not going to be competing for a spot at an advanced engineering school or something. You know, and so if, if these statements are true, we need to get the kids in school because their education is the future. And we need to push a little, we, I'm advocating for a harder push. And, and I'm hearing lots of stories about kids whose education has suffered and yeah, and, you know, and, and you can look online. I, I don't see, private schools have been open and open and open. And I don't hear about super spreading events at open private schools that are running full five days a week. And we're going to lose a lot of kids to private schools and that's, I'm looking for, I'm looking for that. So if, if, if I, if, you know, I, I've said my piece and, you know, I don't know. I guess we let our board leadership and Scott take this discussion and decide what to do with it going forward. And I'm, I'm good. I, I, you know, I've said my, I, I just know that it's, what have we got? It's almost the end of April. We got May, June, July, August, end of August. We got four months before school starts next year. And they got a plan right now for it. So that's why the resolution, that's why I'm pushing for it now. And I started in February for it. So.
Okay.
Anyway, very good. I said my piece and I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. I, there was one point I wanted to, to jump in on and I heard it a couple of times. So this idea of painting ourselves in a corner, I, I don't follow that logic at all. I don't think any resolution we could pass paints us in any kind of corner. All we're really saying is all things being equal, let's prioritize keeping the kids in school five days a week in the fall. Really, that's what we're saying. I mean, how it's worded, there's a lot of could phrase it, if they're going to keep it shut, then it's going to, it doesn't paint us into a corner. It's not a legal issue. It's not an MOU issue. In fact, all the MOUs are around all of the hybrid stuff. The, the MOUs aren't because of going back five days a week in the fall. So the, the, the challenge here isn't, do we paint ourselves in a, in a corner? The challenge is, do we advocate for the kids? That's, that's where I'm at. I'm not hearing a, a roaring consensus around that. But I just, I, you know, I'll, I'll say my piece too. I, I feel like advocating for the kids is the most important thing we can do.
Well, I'm going to disagree with you, Jonathan. I think all of us are advocating for the kids. And I think I resent the, the statement that you just made, that, that, you know, that we're kind of not. You know, and there are issues with MOUs. If the numbers are really high in the fall or in August and, you know, we have contracts to fulfill with our teachers and our classified staff and their contracts, you know, we need to look at the wording. There could be some MOUs in that. There's a pandemic right now. And, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't appreciate, you know, the, the sentiments that you just said. I am all for the kids going back to school, but we do have to think about those things and that's real. We're a public education system. And we have to think about taxpayer money. We have to think about, you know, what we're doing with, you know, how the teachers are going to react and what their contracts say. The classified staff, we have to make sure that the kids go back safely. We have to make sure that we put on safety precautions, the distancing. We have to make sure we do all of that. And that is, I think every one of us is advocating for that and wanting them to go back five days a week with the proper protocols in, in, in check. So I, you know, I'm not going to sit here and, and, and take that from you. Scott and his team are doing everything they can to do that. I support that. And I'm going to let him do his job and his team do his job. And if he needs us, then he'll ask us. It's grandstanding to send a resolution. I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm not a doctor. I'm not going to sit here and say what the OHA should say. So I'm here to say that I support everything that we can do to get those kids back into school five days a week. We just have different thought processes on it.
Yes, Jennifer.
Well, I just want to make sure that Irv gets a chance to weigh in because part of the reason for putting this on the agenda is just to feel out where it could go on future agendas if we would, if we're going to move forward. And so I think it would help to hear from Irv if he's willing.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, I, I mean, oftentimes I have a lot to say, but I choose not to say it. Because if you listen to the media, read about this whole situation, whether you're a doctor, whatever you are, there are so many opinions and they've changed from the start. It's hard to follow all of this. But you're all right. The kids have suffered greatly with this choice. And not only that, the teachers and the administrators have too. The problem I see, if this happens again, you'll probably see the face of public schools never be the same again. It, it's going to change dramatically. There's, families will not put up with this again. And that's, that worries me because the public schools have been a great education system for the kids. But if this is what it's going to take, that there's so many factions involved, you're not going to have kids back in school. Their teachers won't have to worry about their jobs. They won't have any jobs because there won't be kids in school. So somehow, I, I don't know what the answer is myself. Everybody's got great ideas and I think by us voting for the five day calendar, I think we all publicly affirmed that we're in support of five days of school next year.
Thanks, Irv.
Well, last thing, it does seem to me that, like Janet said it well, when she said, you know, are we looking for something that is symbolic? Or are we looking for something that might actually create a change in, you know, making it more likely that kids will be back five days a week? To me, it seems like maybe symbolic is the one thing that we, maybe all seven of us could agree on. You know, and so if it would, I don't, I, yeah, if it, it would help, I would say that that would be something that, it sounds to me like people could land on something symbolic that supports, you know, five days a week. So I'm just going to say that and, and we can consider it further.
Thank you. On this topic before we move on.
I, I agree with Jennifer. It, symbolic is really all we can do because the orders kind of come down from the top. We're, we're not really in a position to make the concrete change. So I don't know, my input, you know, I, I would say Jonathan and Jennifer and Scott, you guys see what you want to do with this discussion and let us know, I suppose. So, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Tom. Okay. Well, that's going to move us into our next topic, which is also related to COVID. So the idea here is to discuss the timing and logistics of possible return to in-person order meetings. And I sent out a link that had OSBA's FAQ on public meetings with COVID. But more than anything, I just wanted to get a sense of where each of you were at, what your preferences are, what your thoughts are around it. There's no action tied to this. It's just helping to drive planning around the future, helping to drive if and when we, we choose to go back in person meeting. Value to continuing on with Zoom or Zoom in parallel with in-person, right? You get where I'm going. So kind of an open forum. Again, no, there's no action item here. It's just to get your sense of where you're at. Yeah, Janet.
So I think my primary concern is one of accessibility. When, when we're on Zoom, even though it's not our favorite platform, it does make it a lot easier for people to attend. If we are back in either the city hall room or the district office, we're going to have to comply with masking and with distancing. Which is going to make, you know, there are going to be relatively few people who could really attend in person. And then of course, with our masks on, it can be difficult for, for some folks to be able to even understand what we're saying. So I think we can probably still figure out how to live stream those. So that might be one solution. But I think just in general, I, I think that's my biggest concern is, is just the accessibility of, of the public, the meeting.
Okay. Yeah. And I agree. I think we can, there are ways to solve, you know, for example, we can stay on Zoom even if we're all co-located, right? So there's ways I think of, of, of keeping the accessibility where it's at. Just keep that in mind. Yeah, Jennifer.
Um, you know, Maddie sent us that email describing where we could potentially be for board meetings in person. And I'm wondering if she can maybe expand on that here and just give us a little more of a sense of what her vision is for the space.
I'm here if you'd like that.
Well, one of the things that, one of the things, if I could just jump in, that just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that one of the things we do fully intend to keep as part of our board meetings is what we've learned about the level of public engagement when we have Zoom. That, that will be a staple of every single board meeting going forward. In fact, I think we, it's opened up a whole new door of getting more public participation in our meetings and far better than Scan TV did. If we do go back to in-person board meetings, we will be holding those at the middle school, not at the high school. And there are some reasons for that. And not the least of which is they, they do have the space. We can, we can have the technology there. And also I feel it's important that if our teachers and our, our hundreds of middle school students who attend there even now in a hybrid model in that building, then we should too. And we all know the needs of that facility. And, and I feel strongly as the leader that if we are going to conduct our public meetings, that we do it in that building. Not in the comfort of the high school, but we do it in the building that is in dire need of, of repair and that we lead by example that way. And so I just want to make sure that, that I get that message out to the board in this work session. I think it's really important that, that we as the leaders of Silver Falls, the eight of us, that we do, that we do lead by example. Having said that, I, I do agree with the comment also, if I may, this is my, my humble opinion. I, I work with, with each one of you in a, in separate work groups also, and I thoroughly enjoy that. And I, I would even enjoy it more so if we got to see each other in person. And I really mean that from my heart and I think you know that. The other thing is when we're trying to conduct business in public, I think Janet brought this up, that wearing a face mask so difficult because we have such little time together anyway, like two hours a month. And not to be able to see people's facial expressions, I think, I think is, is an impediment to the communication barrier a little bit. So I just, I would hope the board would consider that as well. So I just wanted to add that. And Maddie, I'm not sure if you need to add anything to that. I think I, I think I covered it, but Dan, I don't know if you had something you wanted to add.
Um. I mean, I just have one question. Would we go back to, would you guys go back to in-person meetings in the library after the new middle school is built?
Depends. Don't know.
Okay.
We got to get a middle school built first. But good question, Maddie.
So Maddie, I guess my question is technical, like do you, and it is wherever, you know, if we meet at the, at the middle school, we would have, I'm assuming we would each have laptops in front of us for Zoom, but we, and we would be distanced so we could have conversations with each other. Is that what you see, Maddie?
This is the first time I'm hearing about meetings at the middle school. So you would probably have to be in separate rooms if you're going to use Zoom at the middle school in order to not get feedback.
Oh.
So yeah, those kind of defeat the purpose of in-person meetings, but if you give me, you know, a day or so, I might be able to come up with kind of a custom setup for you guys. I'm good at coming up with custom setups, frankly.
And well, I, I can tell you that, that we are Silver Falls and we can figure this issue out.
Yeah.
It is not, isn't challenging. We can do that.
Well, I, I agree with the, the bit about the masks. I think it would be really hard to meet with masks on. I mean, I think we can do it.
Right.
But I, yeah, I'm not sure the, the cost benefit ratio, right? It's like, where is the sweet spot? And it doesn't sound to me like it's in the in-person meeting at this point, but maybe we can keep working towards that goal.
Well.
Yep.
If we can have sponsor our meetings, we could all be drinking during the meetings. We wouldn't have to wear a mask. That's just a joke.
No.
Oh. I wondered, I had a quick question about hearing impaired individuals, if we had masks on. Some, you know, hearing impaired individuals can usually, you know, some of them can lip read, you know, and they can actually watch our meetings and understand what we're saying. I don't know, but just trying to think of, you know, you know, all the, all the people that we should, you know, to, to make sure that we don't violate any public meeting laws, to make sure that we have that every base covered. When we shift back to whatever that looks like. So just a thought, just food for thought.
Yeah, Jennifer.
Is Jonathan here?
You might have.
Okay, I guess I'm in charge. Um. I did want to mention, I had been thinking about this and I wasn't going to mention it, but now that Shelley mentioned it, I wanted to just follow up. I think Zoom, at least I, in my Zoom meetings with my students, there's a possibility of turning on live transcription. And so I do that for my students. And so I don't know if that's something that works in this version of Zoom, but that might be something that we want to consider is turning that live transcription version on.
I did not know that. I will, I will investigate that for sure.
Yeah, it can be distracting, but I, I turn it on because my students are at home and sometimes their environments are noisy and they might not hear what I say. So at least it's like one more spot where they can
Yeah.
check to see what's going on.
Good point.
Anybody else want to give their opinion or thoughts about in-person meetings?
I don't have a problem with it, but if I'm wearing a mask, I tend to gesticulate more. And I always worry, you know, who knows, I could come in contact with something, you know, because I'm using my hands to talk, but also, yeah, the muffling of the mask, I mean, it would almost have to be like the clear shield so we can enunciate and clarify what we're saying. That is, that's some just, that's just my thoughts at this time, but.
Anybody else?
Yeah, good, good discussion. Yeah, for getting in person as soon as we can.
Yes, sorry, guys. I lost connection there for a little bit. I think I'm back. Can you hear me? Okay. Right. I got booted twice and then I lost audio. So I'm not sure what was going on.
So we're just.
Anyway.
Jennifer, I think he froze.
Okay. All right, anybody else? So here he comes. I think he's going to give his two cents.
Okay. I just had one more thought.
Okay.
Really prefer to be in.
Oh.
Jonathan.
So hard.
You've been not smooth. Your, your audio hasn't been smooth. So if you're able to, maybe you can repeat your thoughts so we can be sure that we got them all.
Oh.
Jennifer.
Oh, good. Is he back?
I don't know if I'm going to stay back or not. I mean, I can hear you guys and then I can't. So.
Oh.
Okay, let's go on then to Shelley. She said she had one more thing.
Yeah, just real quick, I'm all for getting back to in-person. As I stated for our students, I would love to get back in, in person with my fellow board members. But I also want to mention that if, you know, some of the reality is, is, you know, I think that being in person is good, but I think we probably should look at, you know, a completely different way of, of transmitting our meetings as well, you know, keeping a Zoom, you know, for, you know, maybe work sessions or something or, you know, and in-person meetings for regular meetings. I don't know. This is, I was just, I was talking to Scott before the meeting started real quick and you know, this is a whole new normal, you know, that we've, we've had been forced into. And so this could be an opportunity to expand, you know, what board meetings look like. Pre, you know, different from pre-COVID, when we would meet every time. And I don't know, I think, I think that's something to really explore and it's an opportunity too. So I like to creatively think on that a little longer.
Yeah, I was, I, I totally agree with Shelley and I'm, I'm not a tech person at all, but I'm thinking there must be some way for us to just live stream it on Instagram or something. I mean, I know that sounds like super cheesy, but you know, if, if it works and it doesn't create the sort of Zoom issues of all of us being on the same Zoom call. And I'm sure there's a way to do it. And I'm, I'm very confident that Maddie will be the Maddie, the woman to figure it out for us. So that's an exciting opportunity for us to really just make our meetings as accessible as possible. So yeah, it's really cool.
And the public doesn't need an invitation to email us, but if they were interested in weighing in, we value your perspective. And there's also a new way to email us at the top of the board member page. There is a email everybody address. So it's easier now to email the whole board. So if you have ideas, let us know.
Where, I'm sorry, what, that's a new thing that we have. Where is that located?
It's on, it's on the board page, the, you know, how the page where we have all of our pictures?
Yes.
At the very top, it says email all the board members.
Oh, that's nice. Okay. I didn't know that was implemented. That's good to know. All right. Thanks.
Okay, let's move on to the last agenda item then. And I actually was not in on the planning of that agenda item, so I'm not sure. It says OSBA consultant cost, and maybe we just want to save a cost. So I have my email up here and it says that the bill for the OSBA consultant for superintendent instruction was $525.60. I'm not sure what else we wanted to talk about, but if we need to discuss, we can discuss.
And I think the reason why we put it on the agenda was one of, one of our board members had a just had a question about the amount, if I remember correctly. How, how the money, how the board was spending its budget.
Yeah, I, some of it was just because I feel that people should know that the board spends money and how it is spent. I think that's part of letting the community know and it's part of transparency. And I think also we tried something new this year with our superintendent evaluation. And I would like to know how the rest of the board members feel. Do you feel it was worth the amount we paid? And did you find it beneficial? Quite frankly, I think it was nice to have a third party take care of things. My only concern is, and it's probably something that can be revisited and maybe tweaked a little in the future, is that some of the answers felt redundant to the questions. And so I don't know, maybe that's how the process works, but I found that to be a little bit of a glitch that we were kind of all saying the same thing after a while with each question. But I appreciated having a separate entity doing the process. And I guess that's what I'd like to ask the board. Do you feel that that's money well spent? And did you find it to be helpful for the process?
Oh, I'll jump in. I thought it was very well spent. I thought, given that this was our first round with this process, this new process from OSBA, it was really important to have some guidance on it. And, and I think she was really helpful. I think she was appropriately engaged, but not, you know, overly trying to guide us in a certain direction. So that was really appreciated. And maybe next time, maybe now we take what we've learned and if we feel like there are ways that she perhaps could have captured things differently, to your point, Lori, that we can now sort of craft the final product in a way that fits us better. But absolutely for this time around, I think it was, it was really smart and, and I really appreciate having her there. Yeah. Thanks for asking. I, I thank you for following up on that. That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. And it was, yeah, I think it was money well spent. It was a good process. I don't know if we need to have them come shepherd us through it next time. I think we kind of know how it goes and, and she crafted that final statement. And I think maybe the chair and the vice chair could do it, but do all that home, do all the work that goes into it in public and just, you know, trust our leadership to craft the statement and save the 500 bucks. But because I, I don't know how we craft that. Is that, that's because that, she, she prepared that. Am I correct? Nor did, nor did, there was, there was no one to edit that down. So.
I thought she prepared it, but I, I don't know if anyone else knows. But I thought she did. I thought she helped condense
Yeah.
all the information into a summary.
Yes. No, I, I like the process in general. I liked it. And I, I think we can, I think we get the gist of it, just follow, follow the same format, but neither here nor there, if, if we, if we hire them to come shepherd us through it either way. So.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Hopefully you guys can hear me again.
Yeah.
The, the, the process, you know, went reasonably smooth, I thought, with her. And I was grateful considering it was the first time through it, through the new procedure. And she did, Lori, you're right, parate the summary. So we didn't, you know, the only things we tweaked were just a couple of words.
Oh. Jonathan, I think you faded.
Yeah, I'm leaving my video off. I think that's maybe part of the problem. So.
Oh, okay.
So Shelley, yeah?
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you're still there, Jennifer. I was looking at Jennifer. Oh, um, yeah, I, I agree. I, you know, this new, just for the public to know, OSBA put out a new, updated to the next level process of how we evaluate our superintendent once a year. Actually, there's multiple steps to it, but this was, it was a different process. It was new and it was nice to have someone guide us to make sure that we did it right and did, you know, implemented, you know, information, you know, for Scott as, you know, our, you know, as a professional, you know? And I think it held everybody to a standard, you know, of really working on it. And I mean, I felt myself really working on it and, and, you know, really digging in the trenches for, you know, my responses and, and such. And so, but I think it was a really good collaborative process. It was long the night we did it, but I think it was definitely worth doing now that it's, you know, implemented and you know, to have her give feedback to us, especially on, you know, what to, you know, what, what looks familiar, what's the same. And we could see everybody's answers. We don't know who they, who they were, but we could see the answers and kind of say, oh, okay. Yeah, we're, we're all kind of doing the same thing. We're doing it right. So, and then having her write the statement and sending it to us beforehand, all of us to look at it. And, you know, kind of say, yeah, wow, okay, that works. And then we could speak with one voice as a board when we put out that statement to the public. So I just wanted the public to kind of understand the process that we had to go through because I think that's kind of our job to let the public know what that looks like. So I, that was, that was a great, a great evaluation process for me in all the years I've been on the board. So it was supported, it was helpful. Any questions I had, I could ask the questions and make sure that I did. Or I felt like I did a thorough job of giving our superintendent what he deserves to go in his file and his record. And that was extremely important to me. So I think $500 was well spent this year, but I certain that, you know, next year will be even better and you guys can do it all yourselves. So that'll, yeah, that'll be good. So thank you for that process.
Yeah, because you never know. I mean, it's the first time. And so it's kind of nice just to get a blush of how we all felt as a board about it. Yeah.
I would just add that you know, doing the fact that we did it in public, the incomplete evaluation, each check-in and the evaluation at the end. And, and that is my preference each year to have my evaluation done in public view. Our first responsibility as leaders in Silver Falls is to model giving and receiving feedback. And so, so for our public, it, you know, they can go back and watch that whole thing also to see what the process actually looks like. So anyway, it was a, I, I really appreciated the process for me, gave me clear feedback. And also a lot of times it's good to have a, a third party come in to, to take everybody's comments and, and just help facilitate all the, all the different voices into one voice. So just my two cents. Thank you for making it a really worthwhile process for me.
I could piggyback on that from just an HR perspective. I would echo what Scott said in terms of how someone, when you're doing that public process, having a third party. I really appreciated how she got you to consensus on different ones. And I think that really takes an expert or an outside person who's familiar with how you get people to consensus. When there were some places where there were some different scores. So I think when you're doing that even more so when you're doing it publicly to have that third person takes the weight off of a chair or somebody trying to navigate that and also in their own mind be thinking, what are my, how are my assessing that? So I would, I would continue as, as long as Scott is wanting that publicly to consider having. So I would, I would continue as as long as Scott is wanting that publicly to consider having that facilitator. Do that scoring process. Now, whether the narrative needs to be continued, that can be, you know, maybe. People feel comfortable with that, but I would say that's that arriving at that scoring publicly, I would really encourage the facilitator.
Yeah, Jennifer.
I agree. Everything Dan said, I think that our relationship with the superintendent is our number one thing and paying somebody $500 to come in. And facilitate that discussion is worth its weight in gold. So I. On board for having a facilitator help us come to consensus.
Great. Good.
And I don't know for a fact, but I think you guys are under budget this year. So that's if if you're staying within your budget. So I would say $500 well spent.
Right. And and one more, just quick, I guess, to put a button on this or bow on it. So normally expenditures like that, OSBA expenditures like that, those aren't approved by us. We don't have to vote on them. They're not board chair authorized. They're actually authorized by the district office and that's normal procedure in all the districts. Usually we only would vote explicitly to. Money if we were doing something above and beyond, what would be normal budgeted items? For example, we don't vote every year to approve going to an OSBA conference, even though it comes out of our budget. And we would probably spend however much dollars to attend per per member and the hotel fees and all of that, right? We don't, I mean, so I just, I I think there were some questions around that, or at least I got the impression there might be, but that's, that's really not how this works. Scott and I talked about it. He authorized it. His office authorized it. It's his prerogative to do so. It's within our budget. It doesn't really require. And and I actually asked OSBA about that very question. She said specifically that that's extraordinarily common and it's very rare for boards to. To take public votes on small expenditures of that nature.
And Jonathan, to your point too, I I know that I inquired about it and I think I inquired about it. No, I mean, the fact of the way it's approved and handled, I get that. I just think it's good for us as board members to know. And for the community. You know, how it's done, that's fine. I just think it's good information for the community to know. That's all.
Couldn't agree with you more, Lori.
And I think that's fair and I I certainly.
Yeah. Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Again, apologies for being out of commission there for a bit. Any other questions on this topic? No. Okay, well, it was our last discussion item. And so without objection, we will adjourn. Have a nice evening.
Good night, everyone.